Good evening. This, the 83rd meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. If you have cell phones, either turn them off or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Rabbi Kela Beni To...
Rabbi Jonathan.
I'm sorry. I will be led by Rabbi Jonathan Sedman of Kela Beni Torah. After the invocation, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Did I say that right?
Counselwoman Specter will give you Hebrew lessons.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right.
Our Father in Heaven, source of wisdom and blessing, look down upon this assemblage with favor. Grant the members of this council and its president profundity of thought and depth of heart. Guide them with your strong hand and embrace them with your warmth as they deliberate and legislate, analyze and contemplate for the good of their fellow citizens. Assist them to always serve with integrity and enable them to be faithful servants of the public which has sent them to this august chamber. Grant them understanding so that their decisions will be just. Provide them with empathy so that compassion permeates their sense of purpose. Let contemplation of the future direct their thoughts for the present. Almighty God, please bless this city of Baltimore, her dedicated public servants and committed citizens. Allow our place to represent all that is proper, lawful and moral. Enable Baltimore and her inhabitants to scale great heights and to fully actualize the potential with which we are blessed and let us say.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rabbi, thank you so much.
The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Craft, Scott, Middleton, Ry Singer, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
Specter.
Specter.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, we have a question.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation is by Katie Florrie of the Anti-Animal Abuse Commission. She will talk to us about the important work they have done to eliminate animal abuse and neglect and make Baltimore a city where residents and animals are treated with dignity and respect.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for inviting me to spotlight the mayor's Anti-Animal Abuse Commission. I first want to give you a little history of how the commission came to be. We were formed as a task force initially in 2009 after a pit bull later named Phoenix was doused with gasoline and lit on fire in a West Baltimore community. After this egregious act happened, the mayor formed a task force where we were asked to report back in one year with recommendations on how Baltimore can eradicate animal abuse from our community. After those recommendations were provided, Mayor Rollins Blake formed a commission from the task force. We're doing really, really wonderful work with our commission. Just a few of those highlights. We are consistently looking at best practices in other communities and other states to see what we can do better and what we're really doing really well already. On top of that, we are working with the Baltimore City Police Department to institute training to the officers on dog handling so that we can make sure the officers in our community, as well as the animals in our community, are staying safe. Our commission consists of several agency representatives and just some of those representatives are from the Health Department, the Baltimore City Police Department, the Sheriff's Department. We also have many at-large members from our community and we also have representatives from the State's Attorney's Office as well as the Baltimore City Council. I do want to take a second to send a special thank you to Councilman Robert Curran for all of the support and hard work that he's done for the commission. We greatly, greatly appreciate it and also to the council as a whole for your continued support of the work that we're doing for the city. We really hope that through our mission, we will be able to eradicate animal abuse and we will need everyone in the community's help. Thank you very much.
Thank you and thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of the Animal Commission. I'm quite sure, Councilman, you second-guessed me, have something, some remarks, but I thank you for the great work y'all do. Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank Katie for being here from the commission and I think one of the things that she left out is this was the first animal abuse commission in the country that Council, former Mayor Dixon had set up in action when she was there and of course carried on by Mayor Rollins Blake. It was the first. So we are the leaders and I want to thank you for your leadership, not just SBCA, but also when the commission to mitigate animal cruelty in this town. It's a big issue and Council President has always been with me, most of the council, all the council members have been with me when we fight animal abuse legislatively. So this entire body, and that's just me, this entire body led by our president knows the importance of getting rid of animal abuse in this town. I want to thank you for your leadership for the commission.
Thank you. It is the council council to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilwoman Specter, second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of Proceedings from the February 9th City Council meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is there a motion to move by Councilman Curran, second by Councilman Welch? All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two to three of the agenda, executive nomination.
EA 15-0270 Rebecca Woods, Executive Director, Environmental Control Board.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bill should be introduced.
City Council Bill 15-0483 Plant Unit Development Amendment 1, New Lafayette Courts, ordinance for the purpose of approving an amendment to the development plan of the New Lafayette Courts Plant Unit Development. Sponsor Stokes.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0484 Motor Fuel Sales Air Pumps, ordinance for the purpose of repealing a requirement that motor fuel service stations provide patrons for free use of air pumps for tire inflation. Sponsor Specter.
Chair recognized, Councilwoman Specter.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm sorry we were not able, due to the untimely death of the Chief Clerk, that we didn't have lunch today and I would have been able to explain this bill and seek support. It actually takes us back to a year or so ago when there was language in the city charter that, the city code, that required the 50 cent maximum you could charge for a service fee for a ticket and that, that didn't, that doesn't work in the, in the 21st century. Well, again, there's language that we hope to repeal that has an adverse effect on small independent gas station dealers and they've asked if we would please put this in and repeal the language and I would very much like, I see that you've assigned it to judiciary. I'd like a timely hearing and be of assistance to the small independent gas station attendants and dealers in Baltimore City.
Thank you. Please note that Council Vice President Ry Singer is co-sponsor. Okay, this has been signed to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 15-0204R Establishing a Baltimore City African American Business, Tourism, Entertainment and Heritage Preservation Commission. Resolution for the purpose of calling on representatives from Baltimore's tourism, entertainment, business and heritage preservation communities to meet with the Baltimore City Council and a hearing to determine how best to fashion and establish a Baltimore City African American Business, Tourism, Entertainment and Heritage Preservation Commission and to seek a source of designated funding for the commission. Sponsor Stokes.
Councilman Stokes, you want to speak to that?
Sorry, Mr. President, that, I thank Councilman Welch and Councilman Brand, that's your job.
I'll get them.
No, that's your job. I'm sorry, sir.
I'll get them after you finish speaking. Okay, let me get them before you speak. Please note, Councilman Scott, Councilwoman Mosby, are you holding your hand up? Councilman Curran? Councilman Curran? Council Vice President Ry Singer? Councilman Welch? Councilwoman Clark? Council President Young? Councilman Henry? Councilman Branch? Councilman Costello? Councilwoman Middleton? Okay.
I didn't want to lose my momentum. Thank you. Mr. President, thank you. I always step on your line. I apologize.
Not as much as Bobby.
This has been in this council before, not this session, but I think both Councilwoman Clark and Councilwoman Holton have brought this forward before you. That was, and this has been brought to, to me and now to us by those who do so much in maintaining heritage in the city of Baltimore. I was looking at celebration and our 1812 celebration and all of the touristism and dollars that it brought into the city and I think if we can continue to heighten the tourism and the historic sites, there are literally hundreds and maybe thousands of sites in Baltimore that if we could highlight those better and map them out better than we presently do, we also could generate on an annual basis, I think, many, many more hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in tourism, given the history of Baltimore vis-à-vis African American and the, and the greater history of America. So anyway, so thank you, Mr. President, and those who have co-sponsored legislation of resolution.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee. Oh, Councilman Curran, you speaking to this?
I just want to mention, I want to also co-sponsor 15484, the one right there, look before that, I want the general clerk to note that.
Air pumps?
Yes.
Okay. Please note that Councilman Curran is a co-sponsor on 150484 Motor Fuel Sales Air Pumps.
City Council Resolution 15-0205R In Support of State Action, Maryland Clean Energy Advancement Act of 2015. Resolution for the purpose of supporting the enactment of the Maryland Clean Energy Advancement Act by the 2015 General Assembly and calling on the General Assembly to enact and the governor to sign legislation to protect Maryland's environmental health and economy by accelerating the transition away from fossil fuels and towards renewable, renewables for energy generation. Sponsor Curran, Henry, Middleton, Stokes, Specter.
Please note that Council Vice President Ry Singer, Councilman Welch, Councilman Branch, Councilman Costello, Councilwoman Middleton, Councilman Mosby, Councilman Scott, Councilman Craft, Council President Young, Chair recognized, Councilman Curran.
Thank you for, and I want to thank all my co-sponsors. Unfortunately, we didn't have a lunch today, so I could speak to this at lunch and I'm going to try to make as quickly as I can here, Council President, just a few remarks. It's unusual, I'm taking a green issue, the gentleman to my right here is usually our green leader, but there's a couple bills in Annapolis and what this resolution does is the support of the House Bill 373 and Senate Bill, House Bill 377 and Senate Bill 373, which would double the amount of renewable energy consumed by Maryland residents by increasing the current goals. And the Clean Energy Advancement Act would ensure that 40% of the energy consumed by Marylanders would come from renewable sources like wind or solar. In Maryland's Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan, it was stated that the single biggest thing that we can do is increase the amount of energy generated from renewable sources by increasing the renewable portfolio standard. Marylanders still receive over 6% of its energy from dirty fossil fuels such as coal and gas and is the single biggest contributor to climate change in Maryland. One of the reasons that I was asked to take this on is that there is a public health impact and as Chair of the Health Committee, I've come to find out that the highest admissions related mortality rate of every 100,000 residents in the city, the studies found that 130 were likely to die prematurely each year of causes related to air pollution more than in New York City, Los Angeles, or the entire Washington DC metropolitan area. 85% of Marylanders live in areas that fail to meet the EPA National Clean Energy Standards. 65, more than 65,000 adults in Baltimore suffer from asthma. It is a huge public health concern and we need to be ahead of the curve on this. There's a Nick McCrery, is he here tonight, Nick? But he will be available from the Climate Action Network, will be available after the council meeting to answer any questions council members have. He's running a little late, I guess he thought we were on the 5 o'clock versus 4:30. But with that, Mr. President, I'd like to move for immediate adoption of-
Second by-
-of City Council Resolution 020-
Second by-
-05R.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the rules are suspended.
I move, City Council Resolution 15-0205R favorable and the reason was timing, Mr. President, because the hearings is happening in Annapolis next week.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 15-0205R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, this resolution is adopted. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent count? Motion by Council Vice President Ry Singer, second by Councilman Curran. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, this count is approved. We'll now move the bills on second reader, Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 15-0258 Dr. A. Queesment Aleem, Member, Commission on HIV/AIDS.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on Wednesday, February 18th and I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Council Vice President Ry Singer. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0259 Kerry Hawk Lassarret, Member, Commission on HIV/AIDS.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0260 Patrick A. Ricegavage, MD, Member, Commission on HIV/AIDS.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0261 Elizabeth Stambulis, Member, Commission on HIV/AIDS, District 3.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Curran. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0262 Monica Yorke, Member, Commission on HIV/AIDS, 14th District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0263 Lyndby Pearson, Member, Ethics Board, 5th District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on Wednesday, February 11th and I move this nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0264 Guy Flynn, Member, Ethics Board, 11th District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you again, Mr. President, and I move this nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0265 Reverend Lee Michaels, Member, Commission on Aging.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move this nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0266 G.I. Johnson, Member, Commission on Aging, 14th District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move this nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
No, no ayes?
Aye.
All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0267 Dr. J. L. Carter, Member, Commission on Aging, 12th District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0268 Fabiola Donato Galindo, Member, Hispanic Commission, 4th District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move this nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0269 Michelle Enmendez, Member, Hispanic Commission, 11th District.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welch.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0450 City Streets Closing A Portion Of Creek Alley. Ordinance for the person condemning and closing a portion of Creek Alley extending from West West Street northeasterly 330 feet, more or less, to West Cross Street as shown on Platte 257A, 39A in the office of the Department of General Services and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on February 11th, heard this bill, there are no amendments, I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Resolution 14-0199R Informational Hearing, HABC Participation And The Federal Rental Assistance Demonstration Project. Resolution for the purpose on, resolution for the purpose of calling upon Housing Commissioner Paul Graziano and the staff of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City to reappear before the City Council to further discuss RADS progress in Baltimore, answer any outstanding questions and provide documentation memorializing answers and assertions provided at the hearing in March.
Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also met on February 11th for this resolution and to have a lengthy, but I believe productive conversation with Commissioner Graziano and his staff about how they're proceeding with the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. I move the resolution favorable.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of moving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This resolution is adopted. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0448 Natural Resources, Soil Erosion and Sediment Control, Delegation of Hearing Authority. Ordinance for the purpose of revisiting the provisions governing delegations of hearing authority and administrative appeals of soil erosion and sediment control matters to conform to the counterpart delegations authorized in appeals of floodplain management matters and in appeals of stormwater management matters, providing for a special effective date in general relating to the administrative hearings relating to soil erosion and sediment control.
Chair recognized, Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the committee heard this bill on Tuesday, February 10th. There are no amendments to the bill. This is basically corrective legislation. Move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
Thank you.
Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 13-0272 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling Unit To A 23 Family Dwelling Unit In The R7 Zoning District Variances 1209 North Road Street. Ordinance For The Purpose Of Permitting Subject To Certain Conditions The Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling Unit To A 23 Family Dwelling Unit In The R7 Zoning District On A Property Known As 1209 North Road Street As Outlinin' Red and The Accompanying Platte And Granting Variances From Certain Lot Area Sizes Yard Floor Area Ratio And Certain Off-Street Parking Requirements.
Chair recognized, Vice President Ry Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Vice President Ry Singer.
Mr. President, this bill comes with amendments on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of approving the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, amendments are adopted. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Ry Singer.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 14-0466 Rezoning 1209 North Road Street. Ordinance For The Purpose Of Changing The Zoning For The Property Known As 1209 North Road Street As Outlinin' Red And The Accompanying Platte From A R7 Zoning District To The R8 Zoning District.
Chair recognized, Vice President Ry Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Ry Singer.
Mr. President, there's no amendments to this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Third reader to be held, one meeting.
City Council Bill 14-0456 Rezoning 2001, 2011, 2013, 2105, 2107, and 2201 West Cold Spring Lane. Ordinance For The Purpose Of Changing The Zoning For The Properties Known As 2001, 2011, 2013, 2105, 2107, and 2201 West Cold Spring Lane As Outlinin' Red And The Accompanying Platte From A M11 Zoning District To A B23 Zoning District.
Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 13-0294 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion Of A One Family Dwelling Unit To A Two Family Dwelling Unit In The R8 Zoning District Variances 1201 North Fulton Street. Ordinance For The Purpose Of Permitting Subject To Certain Conditions The Conversion Of A One Family Dwelling Unit To A Two Family Dwelling Unit In The R8 Zoning District On The Property Known As 1201 North Fulton Avenue As Outlinin' Red And The Accompanying Platte And Granting Variances From A Certain Lot Area Size. Certain Lot Area Size, Rear Yard Setback And Off-Street Parking Requirements. President Young, Craft, Scott.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong bill. I apologize.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Walsh, Ry Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0451 Sale Of Property Former Bed Of Creek Alley. Ordinance For The Purpose Of Authorizing The Merit City Council Baltimore To Sell At Either Public Or Private Sale. All To Interest In A Certain Parcel Of Land Known As The Former Bed Of Creek Alley Extending From West West Street Northeasterly 330 Feet More Or Less To West Cross Street And No Longer Needed For Public Use And Providing For A Special Effective Date.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know you're in a hurry, I'm just trying to move it along. Mr. President, I move the whole bill, this bill until the March 2nd City Council meeting.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of holding this bill until the March 2nd Council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passed, this bill be on third reader at the March 2nd City Council meeting.
City Council Bill 14-0457 Employees Retirement System Retirement Savings Plan Clarifications. Ordinance For The Purpose Of Clarifying Certain Reaplement Rules For Class D Members Of The Employees Retirement System. Characterizing The Retirement Savings Plan More Specifically. Changing The Composition Of The Plans Of Board Of Trustees. Providing That All Members May Elect To Invest Non-Invested Employer Contributions In Certain Investment Funds. Clarifying The Plans Matching Contribution Formula. Providing A Special Rule For Certain Plan Def Benefits. Providing For A Special Effective Date And General Relating To Employees Retirement System And Their Retirement Savings Plan.
Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the administration has asked for a floor amendment. It is to add a certain union representation to the, to the retirement system, employee, I'm sorry, to the board of trustees of the ERS. It will reduce the Baltimore City Public School by one member and also reduce by one member of Mayor's appointee. But I think all felt that adding these, certain union representations would be beneficial all over, overall, I'm sorry. And so, Mr. President, I move the floor amendment that is being handed out now to our colleagues.
Second by Council Vice President Ry Singer. All those in favor of amending this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the bill is amended. The motion to carry, the bill is amended. Chair recognized, Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, I move to suspend rule 12-3B To Advance The Bill To Final Passage.
Second by Council President Vice, Council President, Council Vice President Ed Ry Singer. All those in favor of suspending the appropriate rules to move this bill to third reading, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the bill will be voted on.
President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Walsh, Ry Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0458 Release Of An Easement 414 Light Street. Ordinance For The Purpose Of Authorizing The Merit City Council Baltimore To Release An Easement Pertaining To The Certain Property Known As 414 Light Street. The Easement Being No Longer Needed For Public Use And Providing For A Special Effective Date. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Walsh, Ry Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcement. Oh, you want to say something? Oh, you was quit. Chair recognized, Councilman Henry.
Thank you.